It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding an update on the coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19.
Thank you, and Dr. Del Reinozo.
Good afternoon Chair Hartman and members of the board. I'd like to begin our COVID update with information from our dashboard. Madam Clerk, may I have my first slide? As of January 10th, new cases, we stand at 630. We are reporting one new death. The death is an individual of 70-plus years of age with no underlying medical conditions. The death was not associated with a congregate care site, and this individual resided in the city of Santa Maria. We are also noting 6,513 active cases. Of that, 87 hospitalized. Total cases stand at 58,847 with total deaths at 572. Our current case rate per 100,000 is 187.78, and testing positivity is 26.6. And I would like to note that over the last three days, there were 3,122 cases reported to the Public Health Department. Saturday, we had 1,325, which is a new record for reported daily cases. On Sunday, we reported 1,167, and then yesterday, the 630. So these are all new records for Santa Barbara County positivity rate, case rate, and active cases reported. Next. And we are hypothesizing that much of this records could be due to the Omicron variant. The sequencing reports from CDPH for the last week of December, from December 23rd to the 29th, indicated that 79% of the samples were due to Omicron. We believe that the current levels are much higher. CDC projected that Omicron stands at about 95% in Region 9, which includes Arizona, California, Hawaii, Nevada, and four or five Pacific Islands. And we believe that because of the Omicron variant in our community, it may account for steep increases that we're seeing as well as our neighbors are seeing. Next. This graph describes the Santa Barbara County case rate as of 1/6. In the last two weeks, from December 23rd to January 6th, the case rate has increased drastically at about 405%. We are noting that the Alpha surge peaked at 99.4 last January, and the Delta surge peaked at 31.2 earlier, or late, I should say, in the summer, in August. So the current Omicron surge, the trend is upwards, and again, at the case rate of 187.8. Next. And this graph describes the case rate by vaccination status as of December 28th. And so overall county-wide case rate increase of 446%, so going from a 15.7 to 85.8. But if we drill down, we can see that case rate among unvaccinated increased about 301%. And the case rate among vaccinated increased very significantly, about 792%. But if we look at the difference in case rate between the unvaccinated and the vaccinated, it's about a 2.7-fold, which means that in our community, people who are unvaccinated are about 2.7 times more likely to get COVID-19 than vaccinated individuals. Next. Regarding hospital capacity, we are seeing hospitalization at the cusp at 64.5%, almost to the red zone. And then with regards to ICU, fortunately, we are seeing some ups and downs, but at 60.5%. Next. And this is an interesting graph, just to show your board the surge and its impact on hospitalization rates. And so we see that with the first surge in, on July 29th of 2020, we saw a high of 89 cases with a ICU being at 31. And then with the second surge, we see that the height was at 211 hospitalization, and of that, the 60 in the ICU. And with the Delta surge, which is the third surge late last summer, we saw a height of 82 hospitalization with 24 ICU. And currently with the Omicron, we're seeing 87 individuals hospitalized, and of that, the 10 in ICU. And I also like to note that hospitalized cases have dramatically gone up over the weekend as well. We're seeing an increase of about 50% in COVID admissions from a week ago. And again, fortunately, we're not seeing this dramatic increase in ICU admissions averaging between six to 10 cases. And currently, we do have one pediatric hospitalization, but not in ICU. Next. With regards to vaccination rates, we have 77.3% of eligible Santa Barbara individuals vaccinated, and we have 69.3% of eligible Santa Barbara County fully vaccinated. Public health continues to offer mobile vaccination clinics throughout the county in various locations. Our calendar for the mobile vaccination clinics is on our website at publichealthSBC.org for detailed information on the dates and locations. In addition to this, we started another vaccination effort in IV and tomorrow at Guelita Valley Community Center, and this will run through January, and the appointments are available in my turn. Next. This graph or chart describes the different ZIP codes in our county and the vaccination rates among those ZIP codes. So we continue to worry about ZIP codes that are in the red, like 93117 and 93254. We continue to work with those who are at the ZIP codes in the red and the orange, working with our community partners for outreach, and this is a priority for our mobile vaccination clinic, being in those communities in various locations with various partners so that we can increase the vaccination coverage in these ZIP codes. Next. Current outbreaks, as of yesterday, we are currently, our team, our outbreak team is managing 91 outbreaks. 26 are among businesses, 11 are in schools, and 54 are in various types of congregate living facilities. Next. And I'd like to introduce some forecasting slides to your board. The next three slides are forecasts from CDPH. We are sharing these forecasts with your board since we've been asked to predict what the next few months will look like, given the Omicron surge. I do want to caution your board that these are, at best, rough predictions. And given the changing landscape of the pandemic, we want to say, based upon what we know locally, they may be very rough predictions, but will give us some indication for planning. These short-term forecasts take into account the most recent trends in cases, hospitalization, ICU, patients, and deaths, and apply statistical models to that data to generate the anticipated trends for the next four to two to four weeks. With the volume and pace of COVID-19 data generation, the models or the Ensemble predictions, these estimates may contain unexpected results, may not, we may not see the predictions come true. We may see higher numbers in some cases, or we may see lower numbers in others. Also, emerging details about Omicron variant may increase the uncertainty of these forecasts. I want to explain that the Ensemble forecast, the solid blue line, takes the median of the forecasts available on any given date and fits them all into a smooth line so that we can see a nice clean line for the trending. So for Santa Barbara County, using 94 as the actual hospitalization for January 10th, the Ensemble forecast for hospitalization through February 10th is 1,043, or an increase of 949 hospital admits. Again, based upon our real-life experience, we are seeing that this may be a very worst-case scenario. That reality may look different. The factors that can impact this forecast really is a decrease in case rates, increase in vaccination, and changes in community behaviors. Next. For ICU, the forecast is based on 46 actual daily ICU patients as of January 10th. The Ensemble projection is 786 daily total through February 10th. This projection is also a steep increase, and when we look at similar projections throughout the state, we're noting that very similar trends are indicated for Ventura and Slow. Next. Lastly, this is quite a somber projection about death. Based on 578 total deaths as of January 10th, the projected 30-day forecast through February 1 is a total of 781 deaths, which is an increase of 203 deaths, or 35% increase. Again, I just want to caution that these are only forecasts, and our sense is that the forecasts project the worst-case scenarios based on our case trends and hospitalization trends. But these forecasts can assist us in planning our response efforts. Next. And I'd like to update your board on our current testing efforts. This table represents testing for public health managed testing sites only, and that additional testing capacity is available through pharmacies, healthcare providers, independent testing sites, and school employer-based testing. And also noted that county-managed testing sites, we frequently can operate beyond the scheduled testing capacity by providing testing to walk-ins. So for the last three weeks or so, we have noted a higher demand for testing opportunities. So we have expanded our Santa Maria Fair Park. Beginning next week, we will add an extra day. So currently, Santa Maria is running Sunday through Thursday, 12-hour days. And beginning next Friday, it will be adding Friday appointments. So essentially, an additional 528 testing spots a day. We have a direct minibus at Direct Relief, and we moved to 12-hour operations yesterday. And so we are there now from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and that site delivers 264 tests a day. Anchored by our Long Poak Healthcare Center, we are open 8:30 to 4:30. So we prioritize essential workers and can complete 84 tests a day, and we've added extra appointments as the need arise. Our Santa Barbara Healthcare Center, we also have expanded hours, and our testing trailer is open Wednesday through Sunday, 7:30 to 6:30 p.m., and we've added these extra appointments through the end of the month. Most exciting, we just heard hot off the press, the state did approve our request submitted two weeks ago for an additional site. We are in negotiation with the facility. It will be located in Guelita/Santa Barbara. It will be open 12-hour days, six days a week, and we anticipate that they will be able to deliver 196 tests a day, and we estimate that we will be up and running in two weeks. Appointment no-shows continues to be a problem at all of our sites. So we have individuals booking appointments, and they're not showing up. So that really impacts our community's access to appointments. So we strongly encourage individuals with appointments at any of our sites to please cancel if you're not planning to take that opportunity to test, so other community members can seize the opportunity. Current turnaround time for results is anywhere from 24 to 36 hours for all sites, and this is based upon the increased demand all through the state. Next. And I'd also like to update your board on our efforts to secure at-home antigen tests to distribute for our county. Our five public healthcare centers ordered 80,000 test kits through our federal partner, HERSA. We are anticipating the arrival of these 80,000 kits early next week. We will be submitting a request again today. So these are to be delivered to our county on a weekly basis. The first week of distribution, which is anywhere later this week or early next week, will be based at our five healthcare centers and our partner homeless shelters. We do have plans in place to engage CBOs and cities as distribution partners for the subsequent weeks. Next.
Chair Hartman and members of the board, so Dr. Del Reinozo is aware we have a little delay here on our end. So I believe we see the next page, it's just a little frozen in Zoom. My apologies.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to cover the new guidance from the state on the isolation and quarantine for the general public. So essentially, there are three buckets. For individuals who test positive for COVID-19, they must isolate. This includes everyone regardless of vaccination status, regardless of previous infection or lack of symptoms. So the recommended action includes staying at home for at least five days. Isolation can end after day five if symptoms are not present or resolving, and a diagnostic test is collected on day five or later, and the results are negative. If the individual is unable to test or chooses not to test, and symptoms are not present or resolving, isolation can end after day 10. So you need a test on day five, be asymptomatic to exit isolation. And we are recommending the antigen tests essentially because of the quicker turnaround time. After the individual exits the isolation, they still need to wear a well-fitted mask around others for the total of the 10 days, and especially in indoor setting. Next. For individuals who are exposed to someone with COVID-19, they need to quarantine if they are unvaccinated or if they are vaccinated and booster-eligible but have not yet received their booster dose. The recommended action is to stay home for at least five days after the last contact with the individual that has COVID-19. Then test on day five. Quarantine can end after day five if symptoms are not present, and the antigen test collected on day five or later is negative. And if there is an inability to test and symptoms are not present, then quarantine can end after day 10. And again, masking is key. So individuals will need to still wear a well-fitted mask around others for a total of 10 days, and again, especially in indoor settings. We do strongly encourage everyone to get vaccinated or boosted. If testing positive at any point, follow the isolation recommendation that we've just shared. Next. Lastly, for individuals who are exposed to someone with COVID-19, they do not need to quarantine if they are boosted or if they are vaccinated but are not yet eligible to be boosted. But the recommended action still is to test on day five, wear a well-fitted mask around others for 10 days, especially in indoor settings, and if testing positive, follow the isolation recommendations that I've just shared. And if symptoms develop, test and stay home. Next. Lastly, I'd like to share with your board that because of Omicron, we will be pushing this communication piece to our community. We need to upgrade our mask. It used to be that we were wearing cloth masks, but because of the Omicron, we have a new standard, and we need to upgrade. What's good is to wear a surgical mask. This is effective. What's even more effective and better is to double mask with a surgical mask plus a cloth or wear a fitted surgical mask. The most effective and the best scenario is to wear an N95, KN95, AKF94. And note that the masks should not have a valve. And all masks should fit snugly, tightly, covering your mouth and nose, and consistently worn appropriately. That ends my briefing. Dr. Anzorg and I are available for any questions.
Okay, board members, questions? Supervisor Nelson?
Yeah, I have a question about hospitalizations. That's people in the hospital who test positive for COVID, correct?
Yes, they may enter the hospital because of COVID-19, or they may have entered for another procedure and is tested, and they are positive. So it includes both.
Thank you.
Supervisor Labanino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the death number of 572, you know, hearing some things that were a little different than what I had thought originally from the CDC, just in some latest things, do we track on that 572, how many of those had comorbidities? And of those comorbidities, do we track if the patient had two or three or four or five comorbidities? Or do we just list it as a death?
We used to collect that data from hospitalized individuals, but I am not sure that we have that data available, and we are collecting or reporting that data. Dr. Anzorg, do you recall?
Yes, what we do is we count deaths per death certificate. So the attending physician at the hospital, or the primary care physician at home, or the coroner, for that matter, will issue a death certificate, and we go by the death certificate. If there is any question, if the patient died from COVID or if the death was caused by one of the underlying conditions, I usually get consulted and review the medical record of the deceased at length and in detail and come to a conclusion whether COVID was indeed the cause of death or not.
Okay, I think that would be good information to have. So it's interesting when you travel now, and I did spend some time out of the state, and depending on where you travel to, different states have different guidelines. I'm curious if, you know, when we look at our numbers, how significant the increases are in hospitalizations and death and sickness. You know, are we doing significantly better than, for example, I just traveled to Arizona, where you wouldn't even know that there was, you wouldn't even know there was a pandemic going on. I mean, nobody's wearing a mask, everybody's congregating, and there's really no social distancing of any type of anything. And I'm just curious at this point, if, I know there's different ways to, there's strategies to do different things, but is one significantly better than the other? Are they experiencing explosive hospitalizations and death more so than we are? Or is it just a different manner of addressing it?
That's a great question, Supervisor Labanino and through the chair. We do have that information on a weekly basis. CDPH shares with us how California is doing in comparison with states that are known to have different policies than California. And there's remarkable difference, notably in death. I'm not recalling hospitalization, but definitely in death. And we are more than happy to bring that back, comparison of state data, if you'd like.
I think it would be helpful just to, you know, I think there's definitely, especially with now with Omicron and another turn-up of, you know, we're really getting, we're almost at the two-year point now. I think we're a couple of months away from two years. And, you know, when we look at these forecasts, which, as you stated, possibly worst-case scenario, but we're still putting that information out to the public. I just want to make sure that we're looking at, you know, it's really hard to face people when there's no in-game insight, and I know it's hard for you as well. I'm just wondering if there's any, we just went through, was it 15 slides, almost 20 slides? Is there any positive news that you would like to drop on us at all?
The fact that we were able to order 80,000 tests on a weekly basis to flood our community, I think is a piece of good strategy in managing our COVID response. The fact that we are responsive in expanding other testing sites as well, it's another good piece of news.
Okay, and then just my last question is, I know the CDC, I've seen in some press conferences, has discussed the possibility of, at least they're having an internal dialogue about whether about whether or not to start looking at a strategy of living with COVID as opposed to trying to squash COVID. And I'm wondering if CDPH is also having those conversations? And if so, if Santa Barbara County is also part of that. Kind of looking at this is, this is something we're going to be living with and we got to figure out a way to live with it that doesn't really impact our, our lives the way it is right now.
We started the conversation about how to exit the pandemic, especially when the, when it becomes endemic. I believe that that conversation started and then got sidelined by Omicron. So we're back to scrambling in our response efforts. But it is on the table and CDPH does cover it. But very briefly lately because of the surge in cases.
Well, so this is from somebody that obviously has no medical background or anything. But I'm, I'm just, as, this is something I hear out in the community a lot and just talking to my friends. Help me explain to them how Omicron is not going to get us to that end game quicker because it feels like if you have a virus that is spreading, I mean, as rapidly as this one does, with it seems like a lower hospitalization rate or at least a, a, a lower death rate than what we've experienced, isn't this in some sort of a backwards blessing that, you know, everybody's going to get exposed to it? We're going to get to the end stage quicker? Or is that, or what's wrong with that, that thought process?
I could chime in Supervisor Lavignino through the chair. That is, of course, what we are looking at and discussing. Now, the fastest path to get to living with COVID is not necessarily the best path. Our concern right now is that even though, and that is maybe, that is definitely a good thing, that most people who get Omicron, the Omicron version, do not end up in the hospital, that the percentage of people who end up in the hospital is much, 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 much lower. You, you will remember that I've always touted that of, you know, 10% of, of new infections end up in the hospital. Another 10% of those end up in the ICU. That is no longer the case. That is by a factor of 10, probably less. But if you just have a small percentage of infected people ending up in the hospital, if you multiply this small percentage by a really large number of infections, then you still come up with a scenario where our hospitals will be strained. And not just in order to take care of COVID, but also in order to take care of other diseases. And also, we are seeing a huge number of absentee, absentees with staff across all sectors. And that is, that is very limiting and very unfortunate. So maybe I'm digressing a little bit, but.
I understand what you're saying. I, I understand what you're saying and I think we all, all get that, that to get to that peak, you're going to have to burn through a lot of disease. And you're going to have people that unfortunately have a reaction to that that is, you know, it's heartbreaking. But, and one of the things that I kind of noticed that on all these forecasts, they all ended at the maximum. And it was, I'm curious if, if anybody's looked at, you know, what, what is the, so let's say it maxes out on February 6th, like we're kind of talking about. If we, if we took those charts, and I know that they're rough estimates, but let's say we followed that. How, does that stay at a peak for weeks or months? Or does it, is there just as quick downturn after that, would you expect?
Exactly, that's what we're expecting. When we look at what happened in South Africa and also in other areas where, where they peaked already, they're seeing a very, very rapid downwards trend in cases. So yeah, this is a very different wave of COVID because it goes up so extremely rapidly and then falls precipitously after peaking. So that's what we are looking at. And to use your, your term, yes, the disease will burn through the population at a very rapid pace and will therefore help in the end by creating immunity and by hopefully protecting the vast majority of people of future coronaviruses.
Thank you.
Supervisor Williams?
Well, you know, I do think that the, the less severity of Omicron is good news. I think the problem is even if you have a factor of 10 less deaths, if we end up having 1,200 active cases instead of 600, right? Which that's where we seem to be headed. You're still going to have twice as many more people die even with, with a factor of 10 less severity. So, you know, to me, the, the, the question is, do you take seriously the possibility that our number of hospitalization, hospitalization will go up or not? And it's a difficult call because every time we've had one of these peaks, you kind of, you need preparation beforehand to take the hospitalization seriously. If they're, they're, the, the number hospitalized, the number in ICU and then the number die, that die are also all successive waves after the number of new cases peaks. And so you, we kind of need to make a decision of whether or not to take it seriously beforehand, right? And so I'm interested in, even if that, these projections are off by 50%, that's a massive number of people that would need to be in the hospital. What kind of preparations are taking place for that possibility? So I'm, that's what I'm interested in.
And that's a question for Dr. Doranoso or Anzorg?
That's right.
The, the part of, part of the preparation is again, making sure that our community has access to both PCR and antigen testing. And we are, we've begun that preparation two or three weeks ago. The other part of that preparation is to continue our efforts with vaccination. Not only are we continuing with mobile vaccination clinics, but we're also doing pop-up vaccination clinics in Galita, in, in Isla Vista. And I think the third piece would be to reconvene our hospital partners to have conversations about hospital admissions, to talk about strategies that can protect the hospital environment as well. But I do want to note that I think oftentimes when we have conversations about Omicron, it becomes somewhat of a binary conversation that Omicron is mild or if you don't have mild symptoms, you end up with, in the hospital with severe outcomes. I think that there's, the third element that often is not discussed is the individuals who suffer with long-term symptoms, who is not severe enough to be hospitalized, but they suffer from a host of ailments. And data is emerging that, that that is a real worry. So I would, I want to say that, that mild may not necessarily mean that you won't feel discomfort, that you won't be ill or you won't have long-term effects because you may. And so again, it goes back to testing, vaccination, isolation and quarantine and working with our community partners to promote and, and ensure access to all of those.
Supervisor Hart?
Yeah, I, I think that the death projections and the hospitalization projections are, you know, really tough to see and scary for everybody. And we're all hoping that, you know, by people taking actions and being careful, we can eliminate that and reduce that dramatically. And I think it is, it feels a bit out of control to ever, to all of us and to, you know, I think the general public. But taking action makes a difference and, and the numbers are startling. You know, when Supervisor Lavignino asked the question about other states, I thought, that's really a great question and I just Googled it. And so there's big differences between California, Florida and Arizona. California has almost 40 million people and 77,000 deaths. That's a lot. But Florida has half as many people, 21 million people and 63,000 deaths. So it has almost as many deaths with half the population as California. Arizona is even worse. Arizona has 7 million people but 25,000 deaths. And then what's really startling, and I heard this on the news this morning and it just made me really pause, is if you look at Asia and Oceania, the countries in New Zealand, Australia, almost all of Asia, the numbers of deaths in relation to their populations is truly astonishing. In Australia, with a population of 25 million people, 2,500 people have died, that's all. Japan, 18,000 people died with a population of 125 million people. If you look consistently, South Korea, China, Vietnam, hugely different, much, much more similar in those other Asian countries than to the United States in the death rates. And I think the reason why is, you know, those, those countries experienced the SARS outbreak and they got kind of a warning shot and they culturally adapted and then listened to public health officials and changed behaviors. And it became normal to wear masks, you know, and, and take the precautions that we're asking people to do here. And, you know, nobody's talking about locking down and shutting down and stopping businesses and all of the, the things that are being spun up as potential responses. We're asking people continuously, consistently to wear masks. And now we're refining that and saying, you know, let's all wear better masks. Let's wear the best mask we can get and we can get masks now. And then let's be, let's be careful, you know, about how we relate to people and what we're doing about distances and things like that. So I, I just, I think it should be empowering to realize these things make a difference. And we're at a moment again, as Supervisor Nelson pointed out this morning in his remarks, that seems eerily similar to where we were a year ago. And the answer is the same. Let's just all get vaccinated, let's get boosted. If you, if you haven't been boosted, let's wear masks, let's do everything we can to help each other and we'll get through this the best we possibly can. And other places have proven that it works.
Supervisor Nelson?
I just wanted to respond to that. You know, when we look at states, we know that COVID has hit the elderly harder than it has, you know, the young. And you look at California being one of the youngest states in the, in the country versus where do most people retire in the West and the East? It's Arizona and Florida. So, you know, that's the one thing about this is we're looking at numbers and we're trying to draw conclusions and it's difficult, you know, some of the numbers, you know, there's, there's degrees in statistics for a reason. And a lot of us are amateur statisticians these days, trying to figure these things out and draw conclusions from them. And, you know, I just wanted to add that to the, the conversation. And then, you know, what's going on in Australia? While deaths have been low, has been somewhat catastrophic for personal freedoms and economic opportunity for the people of Australia. And so, you know, there's, there is gives and takes here. There, there are, there are offsetting decisions that need to be made. You know, I think one of the conversations that we're, we're going to continue to have is, you know, are these masks permanent? I mean, is this going to be forever that we're going to continue to be required to wear these? Or is that going to be a personal decision that each person needs to make for themselves? And I think some point in the future, hopefully near future, I like those decisions to be made by elected representatives and not by unelected bureaucrats. And I, I understand that they are experts in certain fields. But as you've heard from Dr. Doranoso, you know, the only thing that she positively can find right now is that we ordered more tests. There's lots of other good news out there. But it seems for, from my perspective with public health officials is that it's more, it's more, it's more. This is what they do and I understand that's what they do. But we up here are looking to push policy to impact the lives of our constituents. If we needed, if we wanted to be run by just public health officials, we could do that. It could be a different form of government. But that's not the one we have here. And I'm anxious to get back to owning those decisions, just like our, in our county with our, our vaccination or testing requirement. That's a policy that we made, you know, I voted against it for our employees, but that's something we made and we're responsible for it at the end of the day. And so for me, I'm very anxious to get to that point. I find these slides on ICU forecast, the death forecast to be reckless and irresponsible. I think that these only promote panic. I think that newspapers will report on these tomorrow and people will be afraid. And I think that, that we need to get away from that. Omicron is omnipresent. We need to start rethinking about the future. Talk to people that have it. Seems that a lot of people that have it is very mild symptoms. I don't believe if Omicron would have been the first wave, that we'd be where we are today. It has been the evolution of this virus. I don't know what the next one, I don't know what Omega looks like and that may be worse. It may be Delta with Omicron transmissibility. And that would be really scary, absolutely. But that's not what we're dealing with today. And I think we need to start to look at these things in real, in reality. The reason why we're doing social distancing here is because of health order. It's not necessarily, because that's what's needed to move forward. So that, that's my frustration moving forward. I think that we need to again, to begin to have that conversation. Acknowledge Omicron for what it is. It's a mild version of COVID with far fewer health impacts than we've seen in the past. It is a pathway towards natural immunity for many people. And I'm hopeful that this might be the, the last wave that we continue to have these type of regulations in place for.
Supervisor Williams?
Well, I don't think we need to look at the projections to be concerned. We should just look at the fact that we have 40% rise in hospitalizations to be concerned. You know, it, that, we are charged with the responsibility of public health. We don't have to even, you know, 40% rise in hospitalizations for anything should be a cause of concern and should be a cause of preparation and action. And I don't know, you know, any freedom of mine that is being interfered with besides wearing a mask. And I'm, I'm sorry, now, wearing a mask compared to the sacrifices of twice as many people dying is kind of a small sacrifice. You know, I, I want my kids and I want the society's kids to be able to go to school. I want society to move on. But there's also basic, you know, very easy preparations and moves of, of safety, like wearing a mask, like getting tested, like isolating if you're positive, that we can engage in to be responsible for allowing our society to move on.
Supervisor Hart?
I also want to remind the board too, that the impacts of this pandemic are not inequitably spread across everybody in Santa Barbara County. You know, there, there are many, many people who are feeling this in different ways and much more intense ways. You know, we're fortunate to have jobs that allow us flexibility of being able to do a lot of our work on Zoom. And many of the professional business, professional people in our community, you know, haven't missed a beat. I mean, obviously there've been impacts on our, our lifestyle. But professionally, economically, you know, the stock market is at the highest market's ever been. You know, unemployment is, is trending down, the economy is booming. People are, you know, going about their businesses. Americans are not suffering economically in, in the way that was anticipated at the beginning of the pandemic. But there are many, many people who are suffering a great deal, you know, who are on the verge of homelessness, you know, who have had job losses, who are feeling the weight of the inequity of our public health system in this country, who are not able to access healthcare the same way other people are. And so I think our policy discussion probably should be focused on that. You know, how can we address that inequity? And what should we be doing as a board to learn the lesson of the underinvestment in the public health system for the past 10, 20 years? You know, and be better prepared in the future to address that. I think that, you know, is, is in our lane. It's not the public health officer's jurisdiction exclusively. And, you know, we need to figure out a way to resource those things so that the next pandemic and the ongoing pandemic is less impactful to people who are least capable of absorbing that.
And your light's still on?
Yes, I.
So go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Hartman. I just wanted to get back to that first question I asked Dr. Doranoso. You know, are all people being tested, going to the hospital? Are those, is that people that are in the hospital for COVID or people with COVID? You know, I actually called my hospital yesterday, checked in. Are hospitalizations up? Not, no, hospitalizations are not up. Are they up with, with COVID? Yes, and that's where they're having an issue, right? So people. So people that are tested and they have to deal with them differently because of the protocols. Staffing is also an issue, of course, because they're exposed, they send half their their staff home, and then they have to bring in another staff if you were working overtime. And I get that, that's a stressor out there. But we're not seeing hospitalizations for for COVID is not, is what I'm hearing from my, my hospital partner, the largest hospital in our county. So, you know, those are the things that we need to look at the numbers. Yes, the numbers go up 40%. I I hear that. That's happening in the general population. And so you apply the general population to the hospitalized, you're going to see a 40% increase as well. And so when you're testing 100% of the people, you know, you're going to get positive cases. And that's what we're seeing, I believe, in our hospitalization numbers. We need to look deeper into these numbers and not draw, you know, reckless conclusions that just scare people. I think we need to be realist about it. I think we need to be optimistic about it while still preparing.
So I think this is the conversation that's occurring in people's living rooms and over their kitchen tables because this is, we don't have all the answers. We have emerged into something that we've never experienced before. And it is, these different waves are, it can be very disheartening. But we've been preparing to learn and to innovate, and we do have many more tools at our disposal, and and we we have to be optimistic going forward. I I think about our county motto, to keep our community safe, healthy, and prosperous. And we've got to balance those things, and it's, it's not always an easy thing to do. I I was thinking along the same lines as Supervisor Hart, and I just thought I would add one little factum to this, and that Texas is about 35% higher than California's death rate, and they have a very young population, even younger than California. So it it translates into about 20,000 deaths in that one state. So it it is a big difference, I think, especially if it's your family. Anyway, this debate will continue, but I do have a few questions for for Dr. Dorin Oso. The first has to do with the San Itnez Valley and testing. We we really have people calling our office saying, many of us are older, we can't get to Lompoc or some other place, there's not testing at the at the pharmacies. So my question to you is, is the testing trailer that's available in Santa Barbara, can can that go on a day to the valley? Or is there some other way to get the the at-home tests to flood them in the valley at a greater percentage? We're, because we're really having trouble there. So what can you recommend?
Chair Hartman, I definitely, we cannot move the trailer or the testing trailer from direct relief for a day under contract with the state that has to stay there or leave for at least two weeks to another location. So logistically, it would be very challenging. However, given that we will be, we will have access to a significant number of antigen testing, we would love to work with the San Itnez Valley partners to be able to supply them with at-home antigen tests for them to distribute.
Good, well, thank you. So relief is coming.
Yes.
The other question I have is, I'd like you to talk a little bit more about what's happening with schools, and then I'd like to contrast that with what's happening with childcare, because I think we have a crisis in our county for testing and and dealing with childcare. So first of all, then, how are, I know that in Santa Barbara, I think in Galita, that the schools have contracted for testing, and and so that's working fairly well. But could you elaborate?
Yes, I'm starting before schools came back in session for the school year, our team worked with all the school districts to strongly encourage them to secure testing sites, whether to jump onboard with the color system through the state, that it's a free platform. So some schools did do that. Some schools chose to do that in addition, contract with other third-party vendors like various ones I can think of. And so we, our team, our school team supports the school counterparts in making sure that they had access to pursue that. Some districts are, did a more diverse portfolio for testing opportunities than others. And so we continue to support schools that have outbreaks that end up not having tests. We have supplied various schools with antigen tests when, during outbreak situations. But in essence, we are, we are available should any school district want to pursue, again, jumping on the color platform or the other options of that their counterparts in other parts of the county are using.
Okay, so that brings us then to childcare. The first question is, are there any at-home tests for child, for children under two that have FDA approval?
I don't believe per CDPH, testing for under two is not required. And I'm uncertain about whether there are antigen or any testing available that's FDA-approved. Dr. Ansor, do you know?
Yes, the antigen tests are not approved for children under two. So far, symptomatic children that had to be tested, whether they have, you know, COVID or another upper respiratory virus, have been tested at their pediatrician's office, which of course is fine under so-called norm, more normal circumstances. But with this Omicron rising cases, it is not sustainable. And we are a little, I agree with you, we are really in a, in a crisis situation with with childcare, especially the under-two-year-olds. So it is very challenging, and we are looking into, one option would be, for instance, the saliva test, that might be easier with a toddler. And the other problem is that childcare is not licensed like schools. It's licensed under the Department of Social Services, and they have very different guidelines. So I'm sure that we will have to tackle this in the very near future, and we will bring this up tomorrow in our weekly CDPH meeting, for sure.
Well, thank you. I, we're experiencing this in my office with Gina Fisher, who has a young child, and she's, what is she supposed to do? Her child is sent home with mild symptoms, or some other child in the class has tested, is positive, and it, this affects the entire class and the families and the siblings. And it's not really clear to get them tested and how long, you know, when, so it's very, very disruptive. And it's not just Gina in my office, I'm hearing this from parents of young children everywhere, and and they can't work. And and so this is, the more guidance, the more testing, the more support we can give to the childcare would would really help the economy and everything else. So I I encourage us to have clearer messaging, but also more structure for the testing because the schools have it, but the childcare doesn't, and it leaves people really at sea. I think that's all my questions. We're almost ready to go to public comment, but I, but I am getting some texts saying that we would sure like to see some PCR testing in the San Itnez Valley, if that's at all possible. So I want to get that on the record and hope that you can figure that out, Dr. Dorin Oso. But thank you for.
Yes, Supervisor Hartman. So previously, when we had the testing trailer, if you recall, the bus, and we moved it all over the county, and the, the state expects us to have a certain amount of testers to be able to support our efforts. So I do understand the need for PCR testing out in the San Itnez Valley, and we'll work with the pharmacies and the urgent care centers and our other healthcare providers out there to see if we can come up with something that'll work.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. All right.
And I'm sure I did have one more question, I'm sorry. Could Dr. Dorin Oso speak to the work that she is doing at the jail to to address the ongoing outbreak amongst the prison and staff population at the jail? It's been a lot of concern. We have a number of of letters from public today about that issue.
And our team, we have a team stood up in our department to support the jail leadership in the outbreak mitigation. And we actually just met, and and we are guided by our CDPH experts in in congregate living situations about how to mitigate that effort. So we have a draft, a list of guidelines that is supported by CDPH that we will be sharing with the sheriff leadership later this afternoon. But our, our goal is to decompress the main jail, support a very intentional and thoughtful movement of transfers to the North Branch Jail in order to mid, basically, end the outbreak at the jail and prevent another outbreak in the new facility.
Thank you, Dr. Dorin Oso. I see that we have Tracy Makuga, the public defender, on the Zoom call, too. I wonder if she could speak to the work that that her department is doing to potentially reduce the jail population, which is obviously a, another element of the solution to this problem.
Chair Hartman, members of the board, it's a pleasure to me here, be here today. I do appreciate all the work that the Sheriff's Department is doing, as well as Dr. Dana Rosa's department. We have grave concerns about the health and well-being of our clients. Our efforts are into identify individuals that should be considered for early release. As you know, we have a very large pre-trial population, but we do, in fact, have sentenced individuals in our jail that could be considered for early release options, alternative release options. And our biggest tool at this point is actually using litigation methods within the court system itself to secure those releases. We also have a lot of concern for the individuals in the jail that are currently suffering from mental illness, that have now been denied movement to state hospital or movement into our PUF. So for us, again, it's the litigation, it is literally working with probation, the district attorney's office, other, other individuals in the system to try to identify people to get out and to release the population. If you look at the, I think the number is approximately 126 individuals who are sentenced in our jail. If you looked at those individuals and you looked at people that were non-violent offenders, for example, which there are many, you could potentially decompress the jail by about 20% by seeking early release or reduce sentencing for those individuals.
Thank you, Ms. Makuga. I know the CEO's office during the holiday period convened, you know, all of the public safety partners in a, in the courts, in a conversation, a collaborative conversation about ways to decompress the the population at the jail and protect public safety at the same time. And I, I'm encouraged by that work, want to support it in any way that we can as a board, and encourage everybody involved in that system to to really think creatively about ways to end this outbreak, because this is, this is persistent, it's continuing. You know, people don't have a choice when they're in the jail about their, their proximity to others. And, you know, we need to really make this a high priority, and I hope, you know, this, I know the Sheriff's Department is working at it, but I I would hope that, that, you know, we could do more quicker to resolve this.
Okay, seeing no more lights or nods, it's time to go to public comment. Madam Clerk?